Last real question.
We're all done.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Good morning. I would like to call to order the Pasco Board of County Commission at 10 o'clock meeting on April 19th, 2022. At this time, silence all electronic devices and mute your microphones. Please rise for the invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Oh merciful Creator, Your hand is open wide to satisfy the needs of every living creature. Make us thankful for Your loving providence and grant that we, remembering the account that we must one day give, may be faithful stewards of Your good gifts. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a foundation under God, infinite, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
District One, Commissioner Oakley.
Here.
District Two, Commissioner Moore.
Here.
District Four, Commissioner Fitzpatrick.
Here.
District Five, Commissioner Mariano.
Here.
District Three, Chairman Starkey.
Excuse. Now is the time for public comment. Citizens are given an opportunity to comment on any current or future agenda item coming before the Board and on any other business under the Board's purview. Today's public comment will be handled as follows. First, we will take public comment from those who are here in person. Then, we will take public comment from those who are pre-registered for a WebEx link and are currently on cue. We request that when you address the Board, comments are not directed personally against the Commissioner or team member, but rather directed at the issues. This provides mutual respect between the Board members and the public. After stating your name and address for the clerk, a three-minute timer will be activated. After two minutes, a single beep will indicate you have one minute left. When your time is up, two beeps will sound and you should close your comments. WebEx participants will be disconnected automatically when their time is up. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone signed up for public comment?
Yes, Mr. Chair, we do have individuals signed up in person. No one is here on WebEx, so I'll go ahead and call the first person. I have Mark Twolsh-Hoven. I might have pronounced that incorrectly, I apologize. And he has been granted five minutes. If you could state your name and address for the record and then you may begin your comments.
Can I hand out a PowerPoint?
Motion to receive and file.
It's also online.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Yeah, just hand it to the clerk.
Hand it right here.
Sorry.
Hand it right over here. Thank you.
Tell me when I need to start. Okay, my name is Mark Twolsh-Hoven. My address is 11800 Driver Lane, Spring Hills, Florida. I'm speaking in behalf of Pilot Country Airport with the address 11500 Pilot Country Drive in Spring Hill, Florida. Not California, Florida, sorry.
You may proceed with your comments.
Okay. Good morning, Commissioners. I appreciate the opportunity to speak in behalf of the Pilot Country Airport. I have made a small presentation with eight slides. Maybe we could forward to the next slides. Of course, I'm here because we are very concerned about the future of the airports in general for Pilot Country. There is a Florida statute 330 and 333, which was passed by Florida in 2011 with a mandate to be implemented by 2017. With the development of SR52 and 41, there is a significant amount of new development that is coming around our small airport. Our airport is a public airport by the FAA. It's a public transportation hub. And with the new Moffett Research Center coming in, I can assure you that doctors typically would like to have airports nearby. Next page, please. This is one of the pages that was presented by Pasco as their large development plan. When you look at the Florida statutes, we are concerned about four topics. One is noise, one is landfill, one is height, and one is land compatibility. Noise talks about the quality of life for your citizens. No one wants to live in a noisy environment. Landfill is regarding birds that tend to gravitate towards landfills, which are prohibited around airports. That's not so much our concern. The height is called the airport protection zone. Mind you, I say airport protection zone, not runway protection zone. Land compatibility is the responsibility of Pasco to make certain that land use around the airport is compatible with uses of airports, according to the Florida statute. The next page, please. In the meetings I have participated with, which there is a commission on the airport protection zone implementation, everybody talks about the RPC, the runway protection zone. On the image, on the left, it shows our runway. It shows a narrow funnel that is defined, according to the FAA, as a runway protection zone. That means that's where the planes come in. According to the FAA, there is a airport protection zone, which is the yellow elliptical shape. It is one-half the longest runway. Our runway is 3,700 feet. One-half is 1,815 feet. If you draw a circle around our airport, you will see on this image that all the land up to Florida 41 and north of SR52 falls within this space. This is the APC, and at issue here is the land compatibility. Please go to the next slide. We have received a drawing that is being considered by Pasco, the zoning committee, whereby there is a development to the north of the airport called the Fletcher Land, where there are three-story orders, high-density housing directly at the end of our runway. The argument that the developer has is that it's clear of the runway protection zone. Ladies and gentlemen, let me assure you, it's not clear of the airport protection zone, the APC. Let's go to the next slide. We had frequent visits by the Air Force, by the Army, by the Navy, by the Guard, the National Guard. There's noises, and by the way, was that the...
One minute.
One minute left after five minutes. I'll go faster. The noise of a helicopter is stronger than a jackhammer.
I'll grant you extra time if you need to. Finish your presentation.
Thank you, sir. I have two more slides after this. Oh, thank you, Commissioner. Be aware that a helicopter generates 105 decibels. Now, the problem with the studies of noise, people talk about the DBA. That is the decibel average. When you have a quiet airport and nobody flies at night, or it's a quiet particular days, they say, okay, it doesn't matter if you hear a jackhammer sound or a helicopter, it's only one minute or two minutes in a one-hour timeframe. Believe me, you don't want a helicopter or a jackhammer noise at 1:00 in the morning, at 2:00 in the morning, at 6:00 in the morning. It is a nuisance to your citizens. Two more slides. On the next slide, please. On the west of the airport is the new development being proposed by Campbell. And again, people say, oh, it's clear of the 65 decibel average contours. Let me assure you, this home, this does not give a quality of life for the citizens. This is a very big concern for us. It's not the noise study 65 dB average, it is the peak noise. My last slide, ladies and gentlemen. With Florida statute 330, it is a concern about land compatibility. I like to read the blue part that says, "The character of the neighborhood, uses to which the property to be zoned, is put and adaptable and the impact to any new use activity or construction on the airport operation capability and capacity." Florida statute 330 and 333, which ought to have been implemented more than five years ago. Pasco is one of the few regions of Florida, counties, that has not adopted this mandated Florida statute. And I would like to have the Commissioners please consider the fact that we're talking about compatibility in zoning next to our airport, and it would improve the quality of life. Activities we could agree to are commercial development, restaurants, warehouses, you name it, Publix, those type of facilities are in fact compatible with airport protection zone regions. I thank you very much, and I appreciate that you have considered these issues. Thank you.
Thank you. And there's no one else signed up?
Oh, no, we have a couple.
Okay.
Okay. The next person signed up is Jill Trofton. Please state your name and address and then you may begin your comments.
Jill. Jill Trofton. I reside at 1112120 Pilot Country Drive. I'm here today, by the way, hello, Florida County Commissioners.
Just bend the mic down.
How about that?
Bend it. You don't have to hold it. Nope. Bend it. Bend the end.
Good? Good?
It'll go down.
Bend it down.
Down.
See my hand?
How about this?
It's just the end of it.
It's just the end of it.
I'm not used to this. Okay. All right.
You're good.
So, thank you. I'm here today on behalf of Mark Bedd. He's not able to be here today due to being sick. He is a resident of Pilot Country. He lives at 11748 Driver Lane. This is in reference to the Watermark Residential Development, just southwest of Pilot Country Airport, and the Fletcher Conceptual Site Plan C, just north of the Pilot Country Airport. These areas would be in direct violation of the protections to both the community developments proposed and the airport which Florida statute 333 is meant to ultimately protect. He suspects that if these developments are allowed to continue without compliance to Florida statute 333, Pasco County and all involved will be subject to future legal proceedings. The moratorium should be preventing these projects until Pasco complies with the Florida statute 333. Pasco County has been in violation of Florida statute 333 for years and continues to delay compliance to allow incompatible land use to the detriment of the airport and the surrounding community development, impacting the safety and well-being of our citizens in airport operations. Excuse me. Compliance was supposed to be done by July of 2017. It seems that other special interests have influenced the county, affecting those continued delays to pursue their own interests, contrary to the Florida statute, which promotes the protection of county airport assets and surrounding communities. Pilot Country Airport, the nearby Pasco Sheriff helipad, and the future Pasco mosquito control helipad operations within one mile of the airport require that the Commissioners do what is necessary to finally comply with the Florida statute 333 to protect these and other aviation assets, which serve the county and surrounding communities. The county has already allowed rezoning of the Campbell property adjacent to the west side of Pilot Country Airport for residential development in October of 2020. Common sense would indicate that this would be considered an incompatible land use, so close the airport, and yet it was done anyway. This development will end up being a source of conflict for the airport operations, safety, and the residential community in the future. This prediction is based on what typically happens when incompatible land use occurs around existing airports and other aviation-related support activities, as we have here. This is why the Florida statute exists. Mark would like to arrange a demonstration of what it would be like to reside in these proposed development areas so close to the operations of the airport. You might have a better appreciation of what it would be in the best interest, the safety and well-being of those future residents.
Need to wrap it up, please.
As well the airport community. That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you for allowing me to speak on his behalf.
Thank you.
I do not see a name for this one. I'm going to skip it and go to the next one where I'll look. The next person is Rick Warner.
Thank you. Do you guys hear me okay?
Okay. Thank you.
My name is Rick Warner. I live at 11710 Pilot Country Drive. I'm a private pilot, also a former air traffic controller. And I really want to bring to your attention to understand what these proposals are. You're creating what's called a kill zone. A kill zone is anywhere on the approach or departure of a runway for the purpose of transitioning from a flying aircraft to a ground aircraft. By allowing this on the Fletcher property, you're allowing this to be an enormous safety hazard to these people who would consider buying or living there. Not only that, you're creating a natural or unnatural navigational hazard. There's also a proposed pond off the north end as well. Now you're creating a natural disaster area because of the birds that are going to be coming in. We've already had many bird strikes on that airport. By putting that pond there as an example, you're also creating another navigational hazard. There should be an FAA study for windshear that comes across those buildings. We've seen no FAA wind studies at all. So I recommend that you postpone any type of approval on that property, particularly on the Fletcher property, until these studies can be completed and that you'll find that this is a serious public hazard. Thank you.
Neil Corella.
Hello, Neil Corella. I live at 11991 Driver Lane, Spring Hill. Live at Pilot Country Airport. I'd like to express my strong opposition to the possible rezoning and the high-density construction proposed on the north side of our Pilot Country Airport. It falls on the airport protection zone surrounding the airport specified in Florida statutes 333 and 330. I'm one of the newest residents in Pilot Country and moving in November of 2019 after building a new home. And a hangar is my primary investment, my largest personal asset. At the time of construction, between permit and impact fees, I paid $28,000 just to have the opportunity to live in Pilot Country. The planned projects will jeopardize the airport and the future of the airport. The sole reason that I relocated to the community was for personal and professional reasons. I run a small aviation business which depended on airport access. The airport brings value to the country, I mean to the county and the state in myriad of ways, including increasing tax revenues, and it can be used in aftermath of national disasters such as a hurricane for supplies and humanitarian aid to the community. State laws require proper airport protection zone around the public airport for its safety of the pilots and the citizens. From what I read and the fact that you've already approved high-density housing underneath our traffic pattern to the west of our airport, it seems the Board is using a decibel rating provided by the developer and its lawyers. Now, the same lawyer that's representing the developers is the same lawyer that fought us and cost us tens of thousands of dollars to have a gun range shooting machine guns right behind our houses. So this lawyer and this noise study, as far as I'm concerned, is ridiculous. Anyways, getting back to this fourth, the nonsensical decibel rating is based on a distance from the center line of the runway, it's not actual noise rating of planes flying overhead in the traffic pattern. Meaning, days on which these readings have been taken, especially the readings by the lawyer representing developers for the property next to our suburbs, will not account for lots of different aircraft and helicopters. High-performance aircraft, for example, taken off at 6:00 a.m. or anytime on a full-power setting to the north of the property, which is our departure area, can generate a propeller tip speed of almost supersonic speeds, which create a lot of noise. And that noise is going to create complaints, complaints that go to the airport, goes to the county, and puts our airport in jeopardy. So I would ask that the county would please reconsider any changing of the zoning that's there and put something more compatible, such as Home Depot. Anything like that. Anything commercial, industrial, is better than having houses sitting underneath the airport protection zone. Thank you.
All right. Next individual signed up, Wanda Chasnov.
Hi, Mr. Mayor. Hi, Board. I'd like to say thank you for all the help you've all had.
You have to state your name and address.
This is going to be my fourth time.
Ma'am, ma'am, I need your name and address first.
My name's Wanda Chasnov, 6608 Status Lane, Newport, Ritchie.
Okay, now you may proceed.
Okay. Thank you, Board, for all the help that I have received from y'all. This is going to be my fourth time here for other incidents. I'm here to represent Green Key on the flooding. I live in the front part of Green Key where the motel is. They're revamping the motel. I've been to the city mayor about the ditches that are by the motel. The motel floods and oversees Green Key and then comes on our street, which is considered private property. Well, now the road is deteriorating because of all the water that's there. Right now, the fire hydrant is covered up. If we have a fire in that mobile home park in front of us, we're doomed, okay? Because number one, fire department cannot get in there and can't get to the fire hydrant. All I ask is, I know that we've applied for grants. I know we're waiting. I know Franklin County just got $1.3 million, okay, on April 8th. And I don't see why isn't it that we got to fight so hard to stop the flooding. Y'all just dug out Oldsner. I can take you on Oldsner and show you where the dirt's already fell in and won't even drain, okay? Now, I just bought a brand-new car. This Thursday before last, when it rained, I moved my car to higher ground, and guess what? The rain was all the way to my door jamb. I'm not going to pay $21,000 for a car for flooding, and I can't even get into my house or anybody else. Can't even walk to the school bus. The man down the street carries his daughter on his shoulders to go to the bus stop. I got two amputee mans on my street that can't get out. They don't drive because they're amputees. They're both veterans. Why is it that we can't get no help? What did you tell me, Jack, that we was possibly looking at the governor doing something?
Yeah, this board put up an application with Newport Ritchie for $2 million, and it's on his desk, hopefully be signed.
So what do we know about that?
Well, we'll get away from the sign the budget. If he signs the budget, we're good.
Okay. I called him. You know, I'm raising cane. I want it stopped, okay? Because I can take you right now and show you how grown up that ditch is and that no water can drain. And also, I went to the mayor of Newport Ritchie. I asked her, I said, why is it that the county and the DOT, because we're looking at DOT, we're looking at the county, we're looking at Newport Ritchie. Why is it that we can't dig out the ditches till we get the grants? You know what she told me? We don't have the equipment. And you know what I said to her? I said, why is it that Pasco County and DOT and Newport Ritchie can't come together and dig it out till we get the grant? If you just drive down Green Key, look at the trees in the ditch, look at the overgrowth. We can't get in our houses. We shouldn't have to fight to get home. The mailman can't come, the city crew can't come. They come and put barriers there. Would you like to not get into your home when you worked all day and you want to go home and you want to eat and you want to relax? Y'all don't want to do the same thing that I want to do or anybody else. And I'm on a fixed income. I ain't got money to go out there and repair everything that needs to be repaired. Thank you. I hope you have a nice day, and I hope we get a grant.
Wanda, before you leave, Mike, if you'd talk with her and just kind of like re- emphasize they have looked in the area about cleaning the ditches, and you're calling me the other day about Newport Ritchie not having the equipment is not, is something we can work with them. So if you would talk to Mr. Carbella right there.
Yes, sir.
As you will.
I sure would.
Thank you.
Next member of the public, Mike Moran.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Mike Moran. I'm the executive director for the Florida PACE Funding Agency. My address is 7596 Seth Rayner Place. That's in Sarasota, Florida, 34240. Just a reminder, I'm from the governmental entity that exists to bring hurricane hardening and energy efficiency financing to Floridians. This is all bonding that's done through our agency, but it is no taxpayer money. It's all private citizen money. I'm here today, actually, given that we're a governmental entity, and you guys are too, obviously, that we're required, under the inter-local agreement between the two of us, to give a written report and a verbal presentation every three years. With your blessing, I'll put the written report to the clerk when I'm done here, and then a verbal presentation today, of course, but I'm just down in Sarasota, and we have folks in Tampa. If you need or want us to come and deal with you guys or staff or whatever, we're always available to you. And just a couple of real high-level discussions here. One is the total number of assessments for the last few years has been just under $6 million in the unincorporated area. The balance, which is worth noting, is about $3.5 million, which is interesting that even since the inception, is that already $2.5 million of the assessments have been paid down by your constituents. And that's an interesting number for us and very positive, meaning that people are using the financing appropriately. They might finance an air conditioner for, let's say, 10 years, and two or three years into it, they might get an inheritance or whatever, a bonus, and then they pay down the assessment. I think it's worth noting, there's been some confusion on this. When somebody does pay off, they literally call us up, they get a payoff amount, and there's no prepayment penalties whatsoever, so they can pay off. So that's just a healthy statistic to report for you. The average amount of each assessment that we're doing in Pasco County unincorporated is $16,184, which is a little lower than state average that we see. But again, it's an average, it's everything from financing an air conditioner that might be $10,000 to a roof that might be $60,000. I would anticipate the next time I see you, that might be a little higher just due to construction costs and just what's going on in the marketplace. And again, we're seeing a lot of activity related to, the statute was put in place to bring in hurricane hardening and energy efficiency. But one of the things that we are seeing is a whole lot more roofs that are coming about, which will bring up the average, of course. But I think, just speculating here, there's a lot of activity with homeowners insurance in Florida, and why the intention of the statute was hurricane hardening and energy efficiency. We're just seeing a spike in the roofs, which, again, speculating, it's due to people suffering from the homeowners insurance. Some of these folks that have roofs that are over 15 years are having trouble getting homeowners insurance. So this is a financing mechanism for them. And then, Chair, unless there's any questions, I will ask to be submitted into the record for the written report. And again, I can't stress enough, we're available for any communication you want, of course, by phone, or we can come back up and visit you guys.
Let me ask a question if I could.
Sure.
When someone does a PACE loan, they don't have to have insurance, or do they? When someone does a PACE loan, they don't have to have insurance, or do they?
It's, it's a, we, it's an assessment, it's not a loan, where we spend a lot of time and energy making sure there's a differentiation, but I, I get your point for sure. The financing mechanism around that is, is no relation to anything related to any folks that are living in the home. It is, by the way, I didn't mention that, it's commercial and residential, and it's related very specifically to the property. The homeowners insurance carriers and any relationship they would have contractually with the homeowners are totally, completely firewall separate from what we do.
So if someone was to be in that situation with the need of a roof to get their insurance rates down or to get insurance period, which is going on, and I'm glad the governor's calling a special session to address it, they're much better off doing this PACE program than they would be doing a reverse mortgage, correct?
I'm biased on that answer, but I would say sure, is that, you know, I say all the time, there's really only a few options you have. If you're in trouble and you have a roof that's leaking and then the drywall is getting wet, you're either going to pay cash, which a lot of people don't have, you're either going to borrow it from friends and family, you're going to do a HELOC, which is always a great choice. The reality is statistically speaking, it's in the 80th percentile they put on a credit card. And I don't have to tell you with a rotating debt of a credit card of 19, whatever percent, 20% on a credit card, or they do nothing. And that's what the motivation from the state statute came about, is for get people to hurricane harden their homes and/or make them energy efficient. So, yeah, there's all, all sorts of different financing mechanisms, but I would argue that PACE is a, a great solution for a lot of people, but HELOCs and cash and, you know, those are basically all the options that I just mentioned, including yours that you mentioned on a reverse mortgage, but I would argue very much PACE is probably a better option.
Well, and the reason I want to bring it up, I think the PACE program is a better option for a senior that's out there that doesn't have the money, or anybody that doesn't have the money to pay for the roof that need to get. Instead of borrowing it, which you then have to cover and have insurance for it, if you didn't want it, Michael, this lady didn't have insurance, and now she's got to carry insurance, with the insurance rate, she's having a tough time making her bills, so. But it's a good option to have, so I appreciate you.
Your instincts are great, you literally zero down, you, you pick the contractor, it's a big part of my life is making sure that's clear. We don't bring contractors, we bring financing. They put the new roof on the home, you finance it over the useful life, that's as far as we can finance all the useful life of the product, and it's a fixed amount payment. And again, there's no early payment off if they need to.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question?
Sure.
So what, thank you. What is your average interest rate right now on these loans?
If you had to throw a dart and hit any one of our finance agreements, you're roughly looking at the five to seven percent rate.
Wow, thank you.
And next time, if you would, let's schedule an agenda item so we can put you on instead of doing a public comment.
Would love to. I thought I'd kill two birds with one stone. Actually, we were required to do this by May 21st, and given your meeting schedule, I thought I'd at least do this, but again, I can't stress enough, I'll be, come back as much as you want.
No worries.
Okay to submit to the clerk?
You've covered your obligation, but for the next time, I'd say let's, let's do it proper for more people to know you're coming.
Fair enough, anytime you want. Okay to submit to the clerk?
Do a motion.
Motion. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you all, have a great day.
Thank you.
All right. Next person is Jesus Martinez.
I'm going to have to bend it up, sorry. Jesus J.J. Martinez, I'm the Vice President of Local 4420, our Pasco County Professional Firefighters, also live in Pasco County, 1611 Ledington Road, Wesley Chapel, Florida, 33543. I'd like to start today by thanking you. Thank you for what you've done for us in the past. Thank you to Commissioners that have met with us and hearing our concerns. Pasco County is growing at an alarming rate. We're being told that Rescue 230 will be in service by the first week of May, and Station Nine by the end of the summer. With that said, I'm asking you for help. Rescue 230 and the four new stations on the GO bond that the citizens voted on were needed four years ago when they were voted on. The number has doubled as we near the completion of the first station off the bond and the second new station, not a rebuild, in nearly 10 years. The number of needed positions is growing as well. Our 37 new hires is now down to 32, as many of them have left for other departments with better pay and better benefits. We've lost seven experienced firefighters because they are simply burned out from the large call volume. And the relief is nowhere in sight. The county will continue to grow, and the amount of emergency calls is increasing faster than we have all expected. We've worked with our administration to do what we can to help with these issues. Pasco firefighters are a proud breed. We love our job, we love this county, and we love the citizens in it. But we're human, humans break. I got a call from a friend of mine in the Wesley Chapel area, he was responding to a call. They just pulled in the station, it came from a call, the rescue was transporting. And they got another call, they were in and out of the station in 30 seconds. The GPS said they were 18 minutes away. Within 17 minutes, the patient stopped breathing. It took 18 minutes to get there, and their ambulance took 23 from their station. All this firefighter could think of, what if I got there sooner? What if I could make a difference? I could be there. We have the tools, we have the knowledge, we just need to get there sooner. This is just one example of what is going on in our county. We are here today because these stories haunt us. This county can do better, and our residents deserve better, but we're willing to work with you for our citizens. Thank you.
Next person is John Weber.
Most will receive a file.
All in favor, say aye.
John Weber, 1193 Port Driver Lane, Spring Hill. I also am a resident at the airport. What I'm here about today is asking the county to, to help with a trash problem. This particular property is in Ms. Starkey's area. I've talked to the code enforcement people, they tell me that there's nothing that they can do but write a citation that gets ignored. And if you could see the pictures, you'll understand what I'm talking about, that these pictures was taken in the first part of the month, and it's gotten worse since then. I, I stopped down to see Ms. Starkey, but she was out, but, you know, I don't know where else to go for help for this particular problem.
Is that, is that all, sir?
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Code enforcement?
I was going to go to Sally, but I just.
I didn't have anybody to hear from code.
Well, Sally Sherman's here. If you, if you're through, I would say talk, talk. Okay, so talk with Sally Sherman, she'll look at these and address them for you.
She might want those pictures, though. I don't think you have them.
Sally, if you want, these pictures are available.
Yeah, they're pretty.
These are the official records, so I need them back. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and the last person I have signed up is George Hulse.
Hey, I'm going to pass on my time.
That's it, that I have signed up.
Okay.
Paul, make sure that there's nobody here.
Is there any, anyone else who didn't sign up that would like to address the board? Okay. And there's no one on?
No one is on with us.
Okay. Now is the time for resolutions. Madam Clerk, would you please read the first resolution, and would the recipient please approach the podium?
The first resolution is for community development. I see them walking up. All right. I have two things to read. So the first is our resolution, Resolution Number 22-113, a resolution by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, declaring the week of April 11th through the 15th as Community Development Week in Pasco County. Whereas Pasco County's Community Development Department has demonstrated tireless dedication to the revitalization of neighborhoods and the creation of affordable housing throughout the county. And whereas the week of April 11th through 15th, 2022, has been nationally designated as Community Development Week by the National Association of Counties and the National Community Development Association. And whereas National Community Development Week celebrates the Community Development Block Grant Program and the Home Investment Partnership Program. And whereas the Community Development Block Grant Program and the Home Investment Partnership Program provide annual funding and flexibility to local communities like Pasco County to provide decent, safe, and affordable housing in a suitable living environment, as well as economic opportunities to low and moderate income individuals. And whereas over the past eight years, Pasco County has received a total of $21,741,325 in community development block grant funds and $3,703,252 in coronavirus relief funds from housing and urban development. And whereas the Pasco County Community Development Department allocated 100% of expended funds to benefit low to moderate income households, while the minimum requirement was only 70%. And whereas the Community Development Block Grant Program supported rapid rehoming projects for 254 of our most vulnerable neighbors. And whereas the Community Development Department provided affordable housing through the rehabilitation of existing units for 112 households. And whereas the Pasco County Board of County Commissioners encourages all Pasco County citizens to support community development activities this week and throughout the year in honor of the Pasco County Community Development Department. Without these hardworking individuals, Pasco County would not be the vibrant community it is today. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, that said Board hereby declares the week of April 11th through the 15th as Community Development Week in Pasco County, done and resolved in regular session with a quorum present and voting this 19th day of April 2022.
Move or approve.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay. And now we have a special Congressional Record reading from Congressman Bill O'Rourke and the House of Representatives.
That is correct. So I'll go ahead and read that now. House of Representatives, Speech of Honorable Gus M. Bill O'Rourke of Florida. Madam Speaker, I rise today to recognize Pasco County Community Development Department. For the second year in a row, the National Community Development Associate, Development Association has recognized the department as a winner of the 2022 Audrey Nelson Community Development Achievement Award. This year's noted award highlighted Pasco's collaboration on the Rosalie Rendu Residences. This innovative project in Newport Ritchie with partner St. Vincent de Paul Cares provides a safe, clean, and permanent place for the homeless and those living with a disability. The units renovated from a former multifamily building opened in August 2021. Rosalie Rendu, Rosalie Rendu Residences include both efficiencies and two-bedroom units for shared housing. Federal funding through the Community Development Block Grant Program, coupled with state funding and private funding, made this project possible. In 2021, Pasco County Community Development Department won the award based on its collaborative efforts with the Vincent House Project, which provides job training skills to those living with mental illness. Under the skilled leadership of Director Marcy Esberg, Assistant County Administrator Kathy Pearson, County Administrator Dan Biles, and the entire Pasco County Board of County Commission, the department has a long history of utilizing diverse and innovative strategies to meet the needs of the people of Pasco County. Thank you, I yield back my time.
Thank you very much. Marcy, you've done a phenomenal jumps as coming on board, you've got a great team behind you there. I would like to say a few words.
Would, thank you very much. Good morning, Commissioners, Assistant County Administrators, and County Administrator. We are very proud to join with the National Association of Counties and the National Community Development Association to celebrate National Community Development Week. We had lots of activities from last week. We, on Monday, we started the week with a morning blend episode, which featured our award-winning project of Vincent House. On Tuesday and Thursday, we focused on our homeless initiatives, and again, focusing on our Rosalie Rendu award-winning project and also housing 254 of our homeless neighbors. On Wednesday, we were very fortunate to have the Pasco Family Shelter opened for, by Catholic Charities. They opened their doors, and people came in to visit. We had met one of their gentlemen with their newborn baby, and that baby would have gone in foster care if it wasn't for the fact that they were able to be sheltered in the shelter at that time. And then on Friday, we worked with four of our current agencies to spotlight them. So, and we're here to finish up the week, and it's a pleasure to be here to receive the proclamation and the, the, I don't even know what it's called.
U.S. House of Representative Congressional Record.
Record, that's just such an honor that that, that came in, so thank you so much. In addition to all of that, and another honor is that a report went to all of Congress on the activities of the Community Development Block Grant, and it featured from Pasco County, the Rosalie Rendu Project. So all of Congress also saw that project, so that's kind of exciting. So just, there's a lot of thank yous to give out, certainly to all of you. You get on an annual basis a list of the projects that we're going to do, and you approve them, and we appreciate your support. But I want to also thank the people that are standing behind me, because whether they've been here 10 years, 10 days, 10 weeks, they get up every morning and come in with a passion to make a difference. And it's not always easy. And sometimes we have to say no, and sometimes we have to jump through a lot of hoops, but the perseverance that I see in them is incredible, and I just really want to say thank you to a fabulous team that comes to work every day. And because of them, we could say that we've helped a number of people. And we might be doing it a lot behind the scenes, and the partners that we work with get a lot of the credit, but they're the ones that really make it happen. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Boy, should we go down and take a picture?
Yeah.
Here is.
There's a lot of people. Yeah, you go down there. Hey, Rod, let's stay up here, let. Great crowd.
I'll let you.
Yeah.
I'm pretty tall, but not that tall.
Everybody right here, one, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
[applause]
Okay, next resident RS2 will be read in title only.
Read title only is Resolution Number 22-112, a resolution by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, commending Deborah Bolduc for over 32 years of dedication to Pasco County and congratulating her on her retirement.
The motion.
Was it hers? Did you want to make the motion? Is that yours, Commissioner?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay. And we'll go to RS3.
All right, is anyone here for Fair Housing Month?
Title only?
No, do it by title only.
Okay. Resolution Number 22-114, a resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, declaring April as Fair Housing Month in Pasco County and recognizing the members of the Greater Tampa Bay Realtors, oh, maybe I should have said Greater Tampa Bay Realtors?
Yeah.
Okay. And for their commitment, for their recommitment to expanding equal access to housing.
Move or approve.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay. And now we have a special resolution. We actually did this a little bit before, we tried to get one of my appointments from when I first got elected, Lee Henley is in the audience today. Lee and Carl, if you'd both come up. So Lee is able to be here today, we're delighted to have him forward, we're going to do it 10, 11 o'clock time certain, but being that he's right here, ready to go, we figure let's take care of him right now.
Okay. and congratulating her on her retirement.
Motion.
Was it hers? Did you want to make the motion? Is that yours, Commissioner?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay. And we'll go to RS3.
All right, does anyone here for fair Housing Month?
Title only?
No. Do it by title only?
Okay. Resolution Number 22-114, a resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, declaring April as Fair Housing Month in Pasco County and recognizing the members of the Greater Tampa Bay Realtors. Oh, maybe I should have said Greater Tampa Bay Realtors?
Yeah.
Okay. And for their commitment, for their recommitment to expanding equal access to housing.
Move or approve?
Second.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. And now, we have a special resolution. We actually did this a little bit before. We tried to get one of my appointments from when I first got elected, Lee Henley, is in the audience today. Lee and Carl, if you'd both come up.
He's a good guy.
So, Lee is able to be here today. We're delighted to have him forward. We're going to do it 11 o'clock time certain, but being that he's right here, ready to go, we figure let's take care of him right now.
Okay. All right. I'll go ahead and read the resolution. Resolution Number 22-022, a resolution by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, commending Lee Henley for 13 years of dedicated service to Pasco County's Metropolitan Planning Organization Citizens Advisory Committee. Whereas the Pasco County Metropolitan Planning Organization, MPO, is the lead transportation planning agency in Pasco County, including the municipalities of Zephyr Hills, San Antonio, St. Leo, Newport Richie, Port Richie, and Dade City. And whereas the Pasco County MPO is responsible for establishing and continuing cooperative and comprehensive transportation planning process for Pasco County. And whereas the Citizen Advisory Committee, CAC, was created to serve as a review and advisory body to the MPO in its planning process. The CAC members are comprised of private citizens representing a broad spectrum of social and economic backgrounds and interest in transportation. And whereas Mr. Henley has served in the United States Army in the Korean War, was on the Tampa, Florida Police Department for 13 and one-half years, was an administrator with the Florida Institute for Law Enforcement in St. Petersburg Junior College for seven years, was second-in-command at the Pasco County Sheriff's Office for eight years, and was chief of police at the University of Tampa Police Department for seven years. And whereas Mr. Lee Henley was appointed to the CAC in 2008 and has been an invaluable asset to the committee for over 13 years. And whereas Mr. Henley has been a Pasco County resident since January 1977 and is passionate about the future of the county and its transportation needs. And whereas Mr. Henley has dedicated countless hours of volunteer time reviewing and commenting on the Transportation Improvement Program Unified Planning Work Program, Long Range Transportation Plan, and other multimodal transportation studies and issues. And whereas Mr. Henley's dedication to the MPO, CAC, is greatly appreciated and has been invaluable to the Pasco County Metropolitan Planning Organization Citizens Advisory Committee. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, that said board hereby commends Mr. Lee Henley for 13 years of dedicated service to Pasco County Metropolitan Planning Organization, MPO, as a volunteer time reviewing and commenting on the Transportation Improvement Program Unified Planning Work Program, Long Range Transportation Plan, and other multimodal transportation studies and issues. And whereas Mr. Henley's dedication to the MPO, CAC, is greatly appreciated and has been invaluable to the Pasco County Metropolitan Planning Organization Citizens Advisory Committee. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, that said board hereby commends Mr. Lee Henley for 13 years of dedicated service to Pasco County Metropolitan Planning Organization Citizens Advisory Committee. Done and resolved in regular session with a quorum present and voting this 7th day of December 2021.
Move or approve?
Second.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And Lee, before I have you speak, if you'd like, I'd like to just say that, you know, as a veteran, a proud Pasco resident, a great American, you've volunteered yourself for all these years to help the betterment of Pasco County, it's been greatly appreciated. I went out and got this for you, I want to read this to you. Little plaque says, "Thank you, a testimony of sincere appreciation presented to Mr. Lee Henley in honor with deep appreciation for your distinguished and unselfish service given to the Pasco MPO Citizens Advisory Committee while serving with outstanding leadership, vision, and ability for over 13 years. You will be missed." Thank you. If you'd like to say a few words?
Well, it's an honor to receive recognition, but I'd like to recognize all of the CAC I've worked with a lot of different ones over the years, and I can honestly say that everyone that I've ever worked with have been honest, they've been truthful, they've been dedicated people to improve the quality of life and transportation for Pasco County. So, the Board is lucky to have such dedicated people and citizens. And I really would like to say that the people of Pasco County that are capable and have the time to do it, to serve on these different committees that the Board has, they need to do it, because not only is it a service to the community, but it's knowing what's going on in the county. You know, we used to, and still do, meet all over the county in different places, and sometimes we go to Tampa, to the Department of Transportation Office, and we talk about regional problems, regional transportation problems. And I've been thinking that way for a long time, that we are a region. You know, Pasco, Hillsborough, and Pinellas, we're in a region. Our people travel all over those areas. And we can't just think of Pasco County, we have to think of the region, of how all of our people can get from one place to the other safely and as quickly as they can. So, I thank you for the honor, but it's dedicated to the CAC Committee.
Well, thank you, sir. Bo, if you'd join me?
I do.
Will you go down and take a picture?
Okay.
I'll take a picture right away. I'll have you front and center.
Phone's right here, please.
Right here.
Hang on one second, please. Carl?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, sorry, I'm going to put this thing down. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Awesome.
All right, thank you, South. Thank you.
Next order of business is the consent agenda.
Right now, I have three polls, C20, C21, C24, and I will also poll C48. So, may I have a motion for the remainder of the consent agenda?
Second.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Okay. So, Commissioner Morris, starting with C20, will you keep them all together?
Yeah, we can keep them all together, if we can. Mr. Biles, I think we have the Assistant Chief here. Chief Caston's out today. Cool. Good morning. How are you?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Thanks for being here today. I just wanted to pull these three items, because they have to do with fire rescue. And I think going forward, I'll probably pull every item related to fire rescue going forward, because we have a lot of questions. There's questions from the team members that are out there. JJ spoke today. So I think in the best interest of our people that work for fire rescue as well as our citizens, it's important to talk about these things that are on the agenda. Normally, these are on consent, and just for the folks' sakes and the audience and at home, normally these are on consent, because they are items that we feel are going to be deliberated, and they're going to get through with no problem, and they're not controversial, because they're for the good of all. But again, since there's been so many questions the last several meetings from some of our friends in fire rescue, I think we need to pull these, discuss them, and discuss how they're going to assist them with their jobs and better call times. So, we can go, if we can, could we start with C20, and tell us what that's going to do for the benefits of the citizens of Pasco County?
So, C20 is kind of a piggyback for a board agenda item from last year. We're increasing the amount of fire inspectors to improve life safety, fire inspections, something that hasn't really been done in Pasco County for many, many years. This is the first eight, and actually Chief Fromm is on line, too. If I misspeak, Chief Fromm, please jump in. This was his agenda item, it actually happened when I first kind of started here, but we're going to add, we're going to start with the first eight fire inspectors, and once that becomes cost-neutral, based on fees and other things with CRR, we'll hire the remaining three. The BPI from last year out of cycle was for a total of 11.
Okay. So, that's for more of the benefit of, not just commercial, but residential as well?
It primarily focuses, so our focus for the last several years has been new construction. We haven't been able to go out and do existing construction.
Okay.
Now, with the increase of the number of inspectors in this eight, well, I was trying to hit all of them.
Don't speed up that process.
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'll move for approval.
Second. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Be good at C21, and talk about that equipment and what that's going to do to provide our citizens better service.
So, C21 is a penny for Pasco fund, or funding from Penny for Pasco. Part of it is going to help us establish what we're going to call Decon Depot. As you know, the Board worked between us and the Union for several years to accomplish what's a premier state-of-the-art firefighter on-scene decontamination program. It's unlike anything that happens in the entire world. Part of our struggle so far is a lot of that gear has to be sent out for washing, cleaning, other services, and purchasing of the Decon Depot equipment will help us keep all that inside. It'll save the taxpayers money, it'll also increase our efficiency as far as processing gear, getting it back to firefighters in a more timely fashion. The other part of it is there's high-rise hose in here, so with the increased number of hotels, in order to fight a high-rise fire, you have to have specialized kind of equipment, specialized hoses, things like that. It'll help us to buy all of that equipment, extrication equipment, which across the entire fleet will kind of standardize all the equipment. We don't want a firefighter on one engine that moves to another one the next day, or his next shift, and it's completely different. So, this standardizes all the equipment, it brings, again, more advanced tools for us for firefighting and rescue capabilities.
Okay, great. Move or approve?
Second. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And C24?
C24 is actually a fleet management agenda item, but it speaks to rescues, it'll be replaced. It calls for the replacements of Rescue 25, Rescue 12, and what is it, Rescue 27. We'll bring in three new ones. I understand this would be kind of a fluid process as far as the vehicle replacement procedures go, in that some of the vehicles, especially now with supply chain issues, things that would normally be surplus-ed out, are not getting surplus-ed out, they're kind of being maintained for parts and other things as we try and keep our fleet up.
So, there's three replacements, but there's one, there's a new one?
Yes, I'm sorry. We're also adding new vehicles for new stages, Rescue 3 is one of them. The current Rescue 9 that we have, we just received, is actually going to be repurposed to Rescue 230, it'll go in service hopefully May 1st.
So, this will be a new rescue, there will be one new rescue in service?
Yes, sir.
To Ms. Martinez's questions about adding new rescues, she mentioned earlier, so this is going to add a new one, so that will help assist in cutting down?
So, Rescue 230, yes, sir. Rescue 230, Rescue 30 is our highest utilized rescue in the entire fleet. They run about 45 to 50% on average, which means about half of their day is running 911 calls, responding to 911 calls. So, this will drastically, hopefully, reduce their utilization by just adding that rescue. The delay in kind of getting that out, it was approved for this fiscal year, the delay's been hiring the staff. We've got this class, it's just finishing their orientation, should be done right about the end of the month, and that's the reason for the May 1st.
How many people in the new class?
This new class is 32 right now.
32?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay. Great. So, just another question for you, I received some information from administration today on new rescues and new engines. So, I just want to clarify this, hopefully, I'm trying to put you on the spot, I just want to make sure I'm correct on these numbers that I'm seeing. From FY17 to FY22, what I have here is there is a 31% increase in engine count and a 39% increase in rescue count? Is that correct?
Yes, sir. I believe that some of that includes spare vehicles that we have to keep for, obviously, in front of maintenance.
We do that, so if one goes down, you're always going to have a replacement, right? So, there's some sitting on the side, always sitting on the sidelines?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay. Great. I really appreciate it. Move for approval.
Second. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
And Chief, while you're here, just to, Commissioner Morris, thank you for bringing this to our attention. I want to say to our firefighters, paramedics, first responders, we greatly appreciate your service. We share the same passion you do to serve the citizens out here every step of the way. What you do in the field with the resources you have currently is fantastic. We're working to help you get it better every step of the way, as fast as we can, we're going to keep on working. I want to say from all my ears that the communication we've had back and forth has led to more and more improvement. Now that we've had this big boost of the economy coming in, people want to come here, we want to work with you in the future. If that means we need to do a workshop, we'll want to do that with you as well. But I encourage you, stay in communication with us, let us work with you, let us try to help you so you can be in a situation, be proud of where you're at, in a sense of knowing that all the resources are going that way. We don't want to see a situation where you show up a minute after when needed. We want to make sure that you have that job satisfaction, that our people get that satisfaction every step of the way. And I know I speak with this board, my previous boards, we want to serve these people just like you do, so keep working with us, we'll keep working with you. And thank you for your service. Okay. C48, I pulled it just because?
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Commissioner Morris. C48, I pulled it just because I own property around it, so can't vote on it. I didn't ask the attorney on this one.
You're able to?
I just don't want any?
If you think there's an implied conflict, you can abstain.
Yeah, I just don't want to take a chance on it for any repercussions whatsoever, so I am pulling it so I can abstain from it. So, C48?
Move or approve?
Second.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? And notice I abstain. Thank you. Okay. R51, the quarterly update for the Pasco Economic Development Council?
Morning Commissioners.
Hi, Mike.
I've been here. Is that good? All right. Mike Bishop, Director of Stakeholder Engagement, Pasco EDC. We're at 16506 Point Village Drive here in Lutes. I'm here to give our quarter to update, our halfway through the year. We've been pretty busy, so I'm excited to share this with you. So. All right, so we'll start with business recruitment, so you'll see our pipeline continues to increase. This is actually the most amount of active projects we've ever had, so that's very exciting. We have six successes, six project wins that we have announced this year. Last meeting, we announced the Amazon project, so we'll see some details from there as well. And the pipeline continues to grow in advanced manufacturing, but also across the board. You'll see the active projects is 92, and leads 71, that's also the highest amount of leads that we've had, so, and pretty busy. So, wins, we're at six, as I mentioned, that's actually up over three, which is the last report that you had, so we had a few more in there. So, we're about halfway through for the year. Our capital investment, that's a pretty big number, that's attributed mostly to the Amazon project that we heard about last meeting. And we're a little more than halfway through on our job goal, we're at 621. So, little update on our business retention expansion, where we deliver workforce services, training services, other resources that we have. You'll see that our company visits, in our main BRE program, we had 19, so we're about 34 for the year, just a little shy of halfway through, but we're on a good pace for that. So, events and conferences, we had a couple of conferences, Bill went out to the IEDC, there we go, Bill went out to the IEDC Annual Conference. I also, and myself and Tom Ryan, attended the ULI Trends Conference here in Tampa. Pretty diverse list of attended events throughout the quarter, which is pretty exciting, headlined by our Net Fest event, we held that right at the end of last quarter. It was great to have that event, and I'll have some details on that here in a few slides. And also some local presentations to local organizations. So, Earn Media, always the fun slide here, we all know that Earn Media is what we can go out there and get and not pay for. So, a lot of the spike is also due to the Amazon announcement in January. We've had roughly, pretty close to 3.5 million year-to-date Earn Media, and pretty close to a million in last quarter. So, marketing team continues to push that and find creative ways to get our name out there. Love Analytics, so a little bit on sessions, users, I'll continue to cruise through this guy. Engagements, strong engagement over the quarter, impressions, these continue to be about the same pace that we see.
report that you had. So we had a few more in there. So we're about halfway through for the year. Our capital investment, that's a pretty big number. That's attributed mostly to the Amazon project that we heard about last meeting. And we're a little more than halfway through on our job goal. We're at 621. So a little update on our business retention expansion, where we deliver workforce services, training services, other resources that we have. You'll see that our company visits. In our main B R E program, we had 19. So we're about 34 for the year, just a little shy of halfway through, but we're on a good pace for that. So events and conferences, we had a couple of conferences. Bill went out to the I E D C, whoop, whoop, whoop. There we go. Bill went out to the I E D C Annual Conference. I also, and myself and Tom Ryan attended the U L I Trends Conference here in Tampa. Pretty diverse list of attended events throughout the, throughout the quarter, which is pretty exciting. Headlined by our Net Fest event. We held that raid the end of last quarter. It was great to have that event and I'll, I'll have some details on that here in a few slides. And also some local presentations to local organizations. So Earn Media, always the, the fun slide here. We all, we all know that Earn Media is what we can go out there and get and not pay for. So a lot of the spike is also due to the Amazon announcement in January. We've had roughly, pretty close to 3.5 million year to date Earn Media and pretty close to a million in last quarter. So marketing team continues to, to push that and find creative ways to get our, our name out there. Love Analytics, so a little bit on sessions, users. I'll continue to cruise through this guy. Engagements, strong engagement over the quarter, impressions. These continue to be about the, the same pace that we see every quarter. Investors, we're at 90 total investors on the private sector side, a little over halfway through on, on our goal there. We're at 284,000. 43 board policy council members, which is the highest that we've had. So really great engagement with our board, which is very exciting with larger organizations here and, and also throughout the region. And we have four new investors, Trias Construction, Commercial Partners Realty, Invincia Technologies, and Emmy Wilson. So a little bit on our leadership slide, went through our audit, passed that no problem. You'll hear from, from health after me, I believe, but just talking about the key legislative items and the dollar total there, we worked hand in hand to, to help promote that. Our events are really coming back on strong. I wanted to hit on this. Our economic forecast luncheon in January had close to 200 attendees.
Who's that guy in the middle?
I know. Some guy that's very good. Do I have a laser cleaner here? Oh, oh, I do have a spotlight. This guy right here. Very good at throwing bags, by the way. So just a heads up. Grow Pasco, that's our entrepreneurship smart start event. That's our second annual. That has grown and developing some really good traction with that program as that continues to increase. And Net Fest, which we featured there in the middle, we had close to 300 attendees, which is getting back to, to pre-COVID numbers. And we're very excited to have that as engagement is a very important part of what we do here. So upcoming events, Meet the Members, we're doing our, our second event on May 12th. That's a Thursday. We have Pasco 50, which is our, one of two events we throw throughout the year to host H R professionals in our businesses here so that Turner Arbor, our workforce development manager, can get vital insight into what's going on in the community. And then our annual awards, I'm very excited to say, I believe I can announce it here. It is, we are still TBD in September, but we're actually looking at hosting at, at the I-PAC in Wesley Chapel, which we're very excited to partner with PHSC and showcase that, that phenomenal venue. So. Any, any questions on that so far?
Any questions?
Okay. I'll continue on to the penny presentation. Let her pull that up. So on our, on our penny presentation, as that's, as that's coming up, we headlined with a great photo of Mr. Fitzpatrick at our 54 crossings groundbreaking. This, of course, and Mr. Zeta there on the left, was a Penny for Pasco funded spec Class A project. So we're very excited to see shovels in the ground there. And for those of you that have traveled at 54, they are making good progress on that. So this will be a welcome addition. And we already have projects that are inquiring about that. So that's very exciting. So this is a, a main overview. And of course, I skipped all my notes here. That got a lot louder. Okay. So our ready sites program, we discussed this a little bit last time. We're continuing to gain traction on that as we have transitioned from marketing the program to landowners, to recruit them, towards getting out there in front of projects and really pounding the pavement and highlighting our ready sites as viable locations for these businesses. So we've had four logistics inquiries on ready sites, two advanced manufacturing, wind aviation, life science, and high technology. So really across the board in all of our target industries. And a lot of speculative interest too, which is, which is really exciting and something that we want to see as we continue to want to build inventory for other businesses that we're speaking to, to come here in Pasco. International program, really the highlight on that quarter was having the council general from Germany, Andre Siegel, visit. He came to our global competitiveness committee, the Commissioner Starkey chairs, and we had a fantastic session where we learned all about, not only insight from the trade mission that Commissioner Fitzpatrick was on with us last year, last calendar year, but also the great amount of German business that we have here in Tampa Bay region. I, I had no idea that we have the largest German delegation here in Tampa Bay in all of Florida. So it was very exciting to hear. Enhanced marketing, we had Florida Trend. If you hadn't seen that, please let me know. I'll get that to you. Florida Trend, major publication that had a whole Pasco spotlight. We conducted many roundtables and sessions with Florida Trend and got the right stakeholders there. And we believe that came out fantastic and is a great highlight of what we have here in Pasco. Workforce Connect, the highlight there, we had 863 users utilizing workforce connect website. That's, the link to that website is right on our main website. Remember, this is to give resources to employers and reaching out to that workforce, becoming a more and more, a bigger issue, I should say, challenge overcome in this economy is finding those, that talent for these employers. So. Executive Success Program, we're a little more than halfway through that. Working on, recruiting for the next class, gotten very good feedback so far. This was the conversion of our old CEO roundtable and it's something a little more expansive that can hit all of our executives here. So we're recruiting for the next class. The next program day is actually this Thursday. We're jumping in a bus with Tom Ryan and we're actually going to go to some of these ready sites and we're going to talk about future development in Pasco. We believe it's critical to educate the executives here on future growth and what's happening and what the plans are. So very excited to have that program day. And as I mentioned, on Smart Start, we had our second annual Grow Pasco. We had over 126 B to B connections. That's something that myself and Dan Mitchell, our Smart Start Program Coordinator, continue to actively work on is how do we make sure we're connecting our entrepreneurs with the rest of our business community and integrating them in a way that's going to be beneficial for all.
Matt, Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Moore?
Yeah. Just one thing. So the Florida Trend thing was great and stuff. Just one suggestion.
Sure.
Is that probably should have had him reach out and talk to some commissioners and have quotes from commissioners, since this is the body obviously that funds all those programs. I think it's one thing. I, I mean, that's just my opinion. I mean, it could have just been the chair. But I, that's, I was kind of disappointed that you didn't have the highest ranking elected officials in the county be able to participate in something again that this body and these team members are the ones that in reality approve and fund.
Absolutely. Yeah, I'll have to trip back on that to see.
Yeah, I don't, I just thought it was odd.
Okay.
I concur.
Yeah.
Yeah. I apologize that invite didn't come that way. I can definitely double check and see what happened there and make sure that's addressed going forward. So. With, with that, this is where I typically stop. I just go to the, the end here. All of this is in your packet, of course, and just kind of give a overview of the progress of the programs. So that's where we stand. We're at 49% halfway through the fiscal year. And all programs are pretty much on track with Smart Start even exceeding that with the number of attendees and just the, the hot entrepreneur ecosystem we have here in Pasco. Any further questions with that?
Any questions? Okay.
Okay.
Well, thank you very much for a great presentation and keep up the great work.
Thank you so much. Have a great day. Appreciate it.
Okay. We'll see how the presentation goes.
Okay.
Do we need, Dan, do we need the monitors for next presentation?
Mike, what's, what's that?
The monitor's not working.
Our monitors in front of us are strobing.
I think it's one slide.
One slide, okay. Let's, let's not worry about it then. We'll, we'll do it after. Thanks. Sorry about that.
Thank you, Todd.
All right. R 52 is a presentation on legislative wrap up. We're going to postpone that. And we're going to move to R 53, Internal Services Office of Management and Budget.
Good morning. Bob Borg, Pasco County Budget Director. This item, R 53, that you have before you here would authorize the team to pursue the second and final draw on the Parks and Recreation G O bond. And if I may, I'd like to read the title of the resolution into the record at this time. This is a resolution by the Port of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, supplementing resolution number 19 dash 58 adopted by the Board of County Commissioners on December 11th, 2018, which authorized the issuance of Pasco County, Florida general obligation bonds, Parks and Recreation Project improvements in one or more series in the original aggregate principal amount of not to exceed $20,200,000, authorizing not to exceed of $10,974,845.35 of general obligation bond series 2022 Alpha Parks and Recreation Project improvements, fixing certain details of said bonds, approving the forms of the summary notice of sale and official notice of sale with respect to such bonds, delegating to the county administrator or budget director the authority to determine the principal amounts of such bonds to be issued and the bid date with respect to such bonds. To award the sale thereof to the lowest conforming bidder based on bids submitted at public sale and to determine the terms of such sale, approving the form and authorizing the execution and delivery of a disclosure dissemination agreement, appointing the bond registrar and paying agent, approving the form and authorizing the distribution of a preliminary official statement and authorizing the execution and delivery of the official statement pertaining to the bonds, authorizing certain officials of the county to execute any document or to take any action required in connection with the issuance of such bonds, providing certain other matters in connection therewith, providing for the severability of parts heretofore if declared invalid and providing for an effective date. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions?
Motion to approve?
Second. Okay. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay. At this point, we're going to move to miscellaneous business. Commissioner One, District One, Commissioner Oakley.
I don't have much this week. Hadn't had a lot going on outside. So everything's good in Pasco County and Eastside and construction, everything else is going. And hopefully we get these roads finished soon. We can travel through them. So that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Moore?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On behalf of Fire Rescue and Public Works, there's a request for a one-time road fix for Deacon Loop. That's in District Two. Estimated by Public Works to cost between $4,000 and $4,500. That's, Fire Rescue was recently called to Deacon Loop but found the road to be impassable to emergency vehicles due to large potholes. So like, like to make a motion on behalf of Fire Rescue and Public Works to fix Deacon Road at an amount up to $4,500.
Okay, so move. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Any opposed?
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Just want to bring up C 47 that was on the consent agenda. There's no need to pull it at that time to cause confusion. But I wanted to say thank you to some folks and that did a great job. It was the Florida Communities Trust Department of Environmental Protection Grant for 40% of the cost of the 318 acre property bought by E Lamp, by the E Lamp program. So just wanted to read the line for the agenda. Proposal was ranked third out of 16 and received support from Senator Wilton Simpson, Representative Arty and Zeke of the Southwest Florida Water Management District, the Nature Coast Chapter of the Florida Native Plant Society, as well as the West Pasco Auto Bond Society. The total grant was worth $1,032,000. So thank you to our legislators, our organizations for supporting this. The ecological corridors are obviously very important to all of us. And we can use these state funds to help lower the costs for the taxpayers of Pasco County. So congrats to Parks and Recreation and National Resources for bringing this, bringing home this over $1 million grant. It's greatly appreciated. And then that's all I have.
All right. Thank you. That's a great, great pickup. Save us all money down the road. Commissioner Fitzpatrick?
I am very excited to see this drawdown. I think it's really important that we continue to move forward with our parks and rec and make sure we have equality through all of the parks for all of our children because we are setting a premier standard and we need to make sure all of our parks are at that premier standard. Also, I attended the Area Agency on Aging meeting and I think it's really important. I would like to read their mission so our citizens know. The Area Agency on Aging of Pasco Pinellas is a trusted resource to advocate, educate, and empower seniors, adults with disabilities, and caregivers which promote independence in partnership with the community. Our meeting lasted over two hours the other day and it's concerning that the helpline calls have increased over 20% in 2020 and the senior homeless population is up 400% from last year. So I really want to make sure that we are making sure we have affordable housing for our seniors, elderly, and disabled. And I know we were still following up. I don't know, Kathy, if you have an update on the one lady that we had spoken about previously? Okay. Thank you. I'll bring it up next time. Because I want to make sure that we're not, once we have someone that we're helping and we're putting them from hotel to hotel to hotel, that we're not losing them in the transition. Because I don't want to see an elderly person get all the way almost to the finish line and then they're back being homeless again. And it's very concerning. And I do think that at some point we need to have a base location for our elderly population. Thank you.
That all? All right, thank you. County Administrator, Mr. Bowles?
Yes, sir. I have a few things, a couple of updates. One is, one of the ladies that spoke at public comment left her notes and asked if the board would receive and file them. It was Jill Trottin?
Most would receive and file.
Second?
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Thank you. We'll get you, get those to you after we're done here. Second thing is, I don't know if you noticed, but on Monday, Florida federal judge throughout the CDC TSA mask mandate for federal funded transportation facilities, airports, airlines, but also included public transportation has, had fallen under that. And so we got notice today that the Biden administration, while they may appeal, is not going to enforce that while it's on appeal. And so we are rescinding the requirement to wear masks on public transportation buses for now in accordance with the judge's order. And the guidance that the Biden administration put out yesterday, the TSA did, that they will not enforce that right now. So that's, that's number two. They're still recommended, but right now that is, we will follow the, the guidance put out by the Biden administration on that. The, the third one is, we have started over the last several weeks, several meetings between our team and sheriff's team with respect to detention center. I don't really have any updates today, but I plan on next meeting probably have a little more fidelity on some updates for his timeline, things that, that impacts. You know, county attorney's given us a couple of attorneys to help us work through that. I know the clerk's been involved in those meetings. You approved a budget amendment today for the clerk to move forward on the Capitol audit, that transition. So there was a lot of work happening behind the scenes. H R has been in the jail several times to talk to all the existing employees about, you know, working for the county and what that means to them. So we're working through it. They just don't have a whole lot to report today. We will get you more formal reports in the next couple of weeks, next time we meet. And the last one, just want to let you know that, you know, we, you know, we talked about people with fire rescue and protecting them specifically with like the Decon Depot and the Decon units that we're doing there. There's a, that's a international best practice. Nobody else does it the way we do to protect our firefighters like that. With that said, the Florida Safety Council recently awarded Jeffrey Brockman, who works actually for public infrastructure and their safety program, for the, the Safety Leadership Award for 2021. So it's not just fire rescue that deals with, you know, dangerous situations, but, you know, other branches do as well. And so he manages and runs a safety program in public infrastructure and has done a really tremendous job over the last few years, really setting them up for success and make sure we're taking care of our people from a safety perspective on the public infrastructure side. So just want to let you know that you have another state award from, for your team here. So with that, that's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. County Attorney, Mr. Steinshuter?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I had heard from both the Chair and the Vice Chair that you were looking for a letter in opposition to Senate Bill 620. I'll have that for you to discuss this afternoon. The other item that I've got is that, that I've generally briefed all of you with regard to the county attorney's position on the jail takeover. If you have any questions that you wish to ask me, I'll be happy to answer those questions. But I've done those as individual briefings with you all.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I have a, there's a couple of dates. One, thank you for the budget amendment. My inspector general is reaching out to various auditing firms to help us with the transition audit, which is not an audit to confirm or, or go into their procedures, but it's more of an audit to look at what assets they have, to verify those assets, and to also do a reconciliation of the assets as well as any liabilities. So we're working on that. Once we have a, a contract, I will let you know on that. I wanted to update on two things. Last I was, I spoke was about Operation Greenlight. It was an event that we held to help individuals in the court process who have court obligations that are unpaid and have a suspended driver's license because of it, to be able to get back on their feet and to have a driver's license be able to be reinstated by helping them afford to be able to pay for the court obligations. We had 261 cases that were either paid in full or entered into a payment plan. And as a result of that, 156 driver's licenses were either made eligible or are eligible for driver's license reinstatement. And then another event I wanted to touch on was Operation Stand Down. It's coming up Friday, April 29th, and it goes through May 1st. As part of it, the court and the clerk and the state attorney and public vendor partner to provide the pass. to provide the Pasco County Veterans Stand Down Court for our veterans to go and get help with their cases. And that is on Friday, April 29th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. If you know of a veteran, this is a great opportunity for them to come. They get lots of services, but also if they have any court cases that are pending in the criminal arena, please have them sign up for this. I have a flyer here, if you'd like that, it's also available on my website. That's it, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I don't see Alex here, anyone from the sheriff's office here? Okay. All right. Undermine, I'd like to talk about the Gulf Highlands Palm Terrace Community Cleanup. It was a phenomenal turnout from the people. We had grappling trucks out there that were in full force picking stuff up. Pretty much as we went to one house, there's like three more around it would come out with stuff if they hadn't already made delivery. We helped people that couldn't get their trash out. Could be like old furniture or other things that were sitting in the garage or sit in the backyard, that they brought it out to the side of the street, we picked them up. That one day, now, keep in mind, these guys are out there on a Sunday working. So I give them all the thanks in the world, but we had one drug house on one road that was just loaded with trash. Code went in the morning, they couldn't get the guy to come to the door. I went later on with Code, they couldn't come, wouldn't come to the door. Somehow Sally, your team out there, went back into that door again and got them to come out. It was an elderly gentleman who was just kind of like being, I'll call it, called held hostage by people that have just kind of infiltrated his building, and we got them to start cleaning out. We cleaned out just a ton of trash, and a lady who was very vocal in the community was, lives right across, had been watching for years, and the tears in her eyes, just like thanking us for what was going on, was a big difference in that neighborhood. So it was a huge success, definitely going to help. And a quick letter from Nancy Benitez, who runs the Citizens Watch out there. "On behalf of Gulf Highlands Palm Terrace Neighborhood Watch Group, we would like to thank Pasco County Commissioners, Pasco Code Enforcement, and the staff in the landfill for setting up our cleanup day. It was amazing. This will help the quality of life in our community. Our goal is to keep our community clean. A special thank you to everyone. Everyone worked so hard to make this cleanup day a huge success. There were several homes full of trash, the trucks were not helped cleaned up. It is amazing our neighbors helped each other bringing trash down to the site." So she wants to thank everybody again. And we're going to do a special day to kind of thank the team, and I'll let the board members know about it a little bit later on today, what's going to go on. But just a phenomenal day. So Mike, thanks for your team. You were phenomenal. This weekend at SunWest Park, there's the Sariah Fest. We're going to have, Ben used to be called Jefferson Starship, now called Starship. They're going to be there for the feature, Ben, on Sunday. Beater Brothers will be out there on Saturday. Ian Beckles got wind of this from one of the promoters and is now going to sponsor the Friday. So Friday's even a free day to come out there. Should be great music, there will be fireworks on Saturday night. So if you want to come out and take a look at the park, since the county's taken over, I think the citizens have loved it, the people have come in, the tourists just love what we've done out there. So it's a great time to actually see the park. It's going to be a wellness festival, so those that need some help or some ideas on getting themselves some help as well from the county, they've offered free spots out there for the county people as well. So it should be a great weekend out there. And that's all I have, so we'll adjourn for lunch.
Thank you.